2020, second and final public hearing on the adoption of the tentative fiscal year 2021 millage rate and annual budget, which will be followed by the regular board meeting, both of them conducted virtually. So at this time, we will rise for the pledge of allegiance. Please look at the screens of your devices where we will have an image of a flag displayed and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Has joined the meeting.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Be seated. And at this time, we'll take the roll. Attendance by the roll. Thanks. Ms. Arthur.
Thank you. This is Danielle Arthur from HART. Please say yes after your name is called. Director Castor? Director Harden? Director Hudson?
Here.
Director Kemp? Director Knight? Director McLean?
Here.
Director Mechanic?
Here.
Director Miller?
Here.
Director Overman?
Here.
Director Schisler?
Here.
Chair Smith?
Here.
Director Vieira?
Here.
Director Williams? You have a call, ma'am.
Thank you. And at this time, our general counsel will read into the record the rules for participation in a virtual meeting. Good evening, board members. Thank you for your participation in this virtual meeting. The change of meeting location from in-person at the HART administrative office to a virtual meeting is pursuant to executive order number 20179 extending executive order 2069 by the governor of the state on July 29, 2020, in section 120.54 Florida statutes. Due to social distance, the boardroom of the HART administrative offices is not accessible for personnel. It's only accessible for personnel facilitating the meeting. Please keep your devices and phones muted when not speaking. Hearing the sounds on the microphone on your device helps to avoid feedback. Please, you may enable the video camera on your device, but you should discontinue all personal conversations for the duration of the meeting. Please follow along with a copy of the meeting agenda and material sent via email. All presentations will be shared on screen while presenting. Rule of passage will be taken with attendance and for voting by HART staff. Form and voting results will be announced. There will be an opportunity for members of the public who are pre-registered with the HART staff to provide comments. General counsel will read in the record public comment participation rules if applicable. During the meeting, please read until the chair asks for comments or questions from the committee of the board members with each agenda item as the meeting progresses through the agenda. When you want to provide a comment or ask a question, please signal that you want to speak by activating the hand button, which is in the white circle next to your name on the screen. The hand will turn blue when activated. Staff will read the hands raised in order for the chair to acknowledge when the participant may un-ease their device and speak. Please speak your name before comment. Presenters, please note that all presentations are controlled by HART staff. Ensure to state your name, title, and company organization for the record, and please say next slide when needed, and staff will regress through the presentation. Thank you.
Chair Smith, you're muted.
Chair Smith, you're muted. Thank you. So I have a little bit to read because it's a public hearing, so just bear with me. It's required for this annual budget hearing. Hereby open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2021 millage rate and annual budget for Hillsborough Transit Authority. Anyone who may wish to speak this evening has pre-registered and will be identified when it is their turn to speak. At a duly advertised public hearing held on September 14, 2020, the HART Board of Directors adopted the tentative fiscal year 2021 millage rate and the tentative fiscal year 2021 HART annual budget. Tonight, the HART Board of Directors approves the final millage and budget for fiscal year 2021. Online, we have made available the documents summarizing these millage rate and annual budget, and these documents include the agenda for tonight's public hearing, which I will now outline. We will consider the adoption of the following two resolutions. The first resolution is to adopting the levying of avalorum taxes, adopting the fiscal year 2021 millage rate of 0.5, and providing for an effective date. And the second resolution is adopting the fiscal year 2021 annual budget of $151,114,097 and providing for an effective date. Each part of the hearing will be conducted as follows. The HART staff will present the final fiscal year 2021 budget overview.
You want me to go on the other one?
I'm sorry. Okay. The board will then open the floor for citizen comments regarding only the final millage and/or the final budget. In order to expedite hearing from everyone in the public who wishes to speak, speaker comments are limited to three minutes. After citizen comments, the board will then take action to move for approval of any changes. Staff will read the resolutions to the board for approval, one at a time, and the board will move approval of the required resolutions, adopting first, the final fiscal year 2021 millage rate, and second, the annual budget, in that order. Prior to our discussion on the resolutions, we are required by state statutes to discuss the final fiscal year 2021 millage rate and the final fiscal year 2021 annual budget. And staff will now present the annual budget overview. Mrs. Stiglitz, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Directors. Danielle, do you have the presentation available? Thank you. So for the record, Cindy Stiglitz, interim CFO for HART. As the chair said, I'll be presenting the final FY21 HART millage rate and annual budget. This public hearing was duly advertised on September 23, 2020, in the Tampa Bay Times, and the sworn affidavit is on file. Next slide, please. On September 14, I presented the tentative budget of $150,914,097 at the first public hearing, which the board did approve. However, on September 17, at the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners' final public hearing, they approved Commissioner Smith's flagged item for HART. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, in the amount of $200,000 for the purchase of two paratransit vehicles. So since I had not advertised our second public hearing, as of that date, I was able to correct the tentative budget to include this revenue and expense, which increased our capital and combined budgets by $200,000. Next slide, please. So this is our balanced capital budget. With that addition, the highlighted local revenue and rolling stock expense categories, as you see on your screen, both increased by $200,000 from the tentative budget for a total capital budget of $55,513,515. Next slide, please. So at this point, I'm just going to read into the record. While I don't really like to read slides, I am going to read this verbatim. The final FY21 not-to-exceed millage rate of .5 mils is the same as the adopted FY20 millage rate of .5 mils. And the final FY21 millage rate is 6.16% more than the rolled back rate of .4710 mils. Next slide, please. And again, let me read into the record that the final FY21 operating budget is $95,605,822, which is $12,108,824, or 15% greater than FY20. The final FY21 capital budget is $55,513,515, which is $17,552,489, or 46% greater than FY20. And the final FY21 total budget is $151,114,097, or $29,661,313, or 24% greater than FY20. Next slide, please. So before I read the resolutions into the record for your approval, I'll take any questions you have at this time from the board or ask the chair to the floor to public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Stiglitz. Are there any questions from the board members or staff? Seeing none, if you're raising your hand and I'm... No, okay. Good. Seeing none, we will now take public comment regarding the millage rate and the budget for 2021. I understand we do have one member of the public for public comment. Ms. Arthur?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Do we need to... I guess we need to have the general counsel read the rules for public comment, for public participation. Ms. Mandell?
Yes. The board welcomes public comment about any issues and concerns and has made provisions to allow the virtual public comment. Right now, it's virtual public comment only for the proposed budget. Public comments offer virtually the afforded equal consideration as if they were offered in person. Anyone wanting to provide public comment for any HART committee or board meeting should contact Danielle Arthur, Board Administrator, at arthod@hart.org or at 8138-955-2426 with the name and phone number for pre-registration. Comments are due by 5:00 p.m. on the day previous to the meeting. Staff will call on speakers by name in the order in which registrations will receive. All callers will be muted upon calling and unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by name. Please state your full name, organization, address if desired. The three minutes are allowed for each speaker, and the speaker will be muted once their time is up. Staff, please proceed with speakers. Thank you.
Ms. Arthur, go ahead.
Hi. Good Mr. Rojas.
Can I have you again?
Yes, sir. You're able to talk.
Yes. Mauricio Rosas, 18 West Mohawk Avenue, Tampa, Florida. I'm with the Byways Committee of Oceano Heights Neighborhood Association. So overall, I want to say that, first of all, I think that the budget is a generous budget. I think the millage rate increase is definitely appropriate and should be moving forward. Now, I am concerned in the subcategories of future or money that's being spent on proposed projects that are coming from TIBARDA. I'm afraid a little bit that we might be using some of that money that's going for our operating budget or even capital budget into items such as the Hyperloop or any of the other things that TIBARDA is working on right now, and that would take away from our budget. Now, I strongly support... I'm not speaking just for myself, but I am saying that we strongly support the Artill BRT study of Florida and Nebraska, and we really want to see this project move forward. I know that there has been an effort to get it going, but there's an issue of funding because some of this was going to be used from the All for Transportation Tax, which is on hold. We would hate to see that project get stalled because of this temporary stay on how we use the funds within Hillsborough County. That being said, there's also a need that I see the marketing program, I think, is the budget is sufficient, but what I would like to see something happen is you need to increase white collar workers. The bus service is not just for minorities. It's not just for poor people. The bus service, we have to do something within this budget structure that will focus on the white collar worker. So in closing, thank you very much for letting me speak. Again, we strongly support the millage increase, the BRT in Florida, and we want something done to focus on the white collar worker. And I could not believe that I did it in three minutes. Mr. Miller, you should be very proud of me.
Thank you very much.
I am, sir. I really am proud of you. Congratulations.
Ms. Arthur, do we have any more public comment?
No, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Yes? Is there more public comment?
No, ma'am. That was it.
Okay. Mr. McLean, did you want to address?
Well, what I wanted to see is if... And thank you, Madam Chair. What I wanted to see was if we could talk with the gentleman that was just on the phone here. He mentioned something of increasing white collar participation on the buses. I was wondering if he also had any suggestions that could help us along that path.
We typically want to, you know, limit the public comment to three minutes, but if you... If he's still on the line, I'll allow him to answer your question.
Yes, I am still on the line. Yes, I can see partnering happening with the Tampa Bay Alliance, the Downtown Partnership, especially also the West Shore Alliance. In previous conversations with them, and in fact, in a conference last year, we brought up that subject, and that was something that inspired them. They said, yeah, that is a demographic that we need to go for. So I would say a strong partnership with the West Shore Alliance to increase white collar workers using bus service. Thank you. Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Rosas.
Yes. And thank you, Mr. Rosas. We really appreciate public comment and take it to heart here, so to speak. Ms. Arthur, is that the end of the public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. At this point, public comment is closed, and I'll open the floor to any board discussion about the millage rate or the budget. If there's anyone with any recommended changes, this is your chance to speak now or forever hold your peace.
Gil Schisler?
I'm sorry. Did I hear someone?
Yeah, this is Gil Schisler.
Yes, Mr. Schisler. You're recognized.
I'm sorry. I'm on the phone. I can't raise my hand. I would like to move to adopt the resolutions for the tentative... I'm just saying, the millage rate for the upcoming fiscal year, and if it's appropriate, well, I did one at a time, I guess.
Right. Great. Okay. That's second. To Ms. Stiglitz will read the first resolution then. But first, Commissioner Kemp, do I see a... Do I have a hand up there?
I was just going to move approval on that.
Okay. So first of all, Ms. Stiglitz will read the first resolution, and then we will take a motion to approve, since we have no motions to make any changes to it. And then we'll go from there to the second resolution. So the first resolution, Ms. Stiglitz.
Resolution R. 2020-09-36. Resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final levying of avalorum taxes, adopting the final fiscal year 2021 millage rate of .5, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. And now, we have a motion to approve by Director Schisler, I believe, and seconded by Commissioner Overman. So Ms. Arthur, take the roll call vote.
Thank you. This is Danielle from HART. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vieira? Director Vieira? Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great. And that takes us to the second resolution, and our ICFO will read the resolution into the record, Ms. Stiglitz.
-09-37. Resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final fiscal year 2021 annual budget of $151,114,097 and providing for an effective date.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Overman and a second by Director McLean, right? Thank you. Ms. Arthur, take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vieira?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great. And that takes us to the second resolution, and our ICFO will read the resolution into the record, Ms. Stiglitz.
-09-37. Resolution of the Hillsborough Transit Authority of Hillsborough County, Florida, adopting the final fiscal year 2021 annual budget of $151,114,097 and providing for an effective date.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Overman and a second by Director McLean, right? Thank you. Ms. Arthur, take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vieira?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And so, one last bit of legalese for the record. In compliance with Florida statutes, a public hearing has been held on September 14, 2020, and September 28, 2020, for the purpose of considering the fiscal year 2021 millage rate necessary to fund the fiscal year 2021 annual budget. And this concludes the budget public hearing component of tonight's meeting. And we now move on to our regular board meeting. Welcome to this meeting to order. So the first order of business is the approval of the virtual meeting minutes that you have in your packet from the first public hearing and the Board of Directors' meeting. So... Move.
Second. Second.
Great. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Kemp, second by Director McLean. Great. And Ms. Arthur, take the roll call vote.
Thank you. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vieira?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And for public input, for this general meeting, Ms. Arthur, do we have anyone pre-registered who wishes to comment on our agenda today?
No, Madam Chair. There was no one pre-registered.
All right. Moving right along is the approval of the consent agenda, item number four. So move.
Second.
Motion to accept by Commissioner Kemp and second by Commissioner Overman. Is there any discussion about the report card item on consent? Then we have a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2021 success outcomes and HART organizational performance scorecard. Ms. Arthur, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vieira?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Item five is approval of two action items. The operations and safety committee deferred action on these next two items to the full HART board regarding the 20X and the 275 LX DOT public transportation grant agreement. Mr. Chris Cochran, Director of Service Development, will make the presentation, and then we'll consider those resolutions. Good evening, Mr. Cochran. You're recognized.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. So today, I have before you two, essentially two action items related to our annual public transportation grant agreements. These are for the 275 LX and the 20, and also the 20 Express. Next slide, please, Danielle. These were brought before the Operations Committee, and actually, I was asked to come back with a little bit more detail on these so that you can help you better understand exactly how these grants originated, a little bit more detail about the finance, financial aspects of these grants, and I hope I'm able to answer these questions here for you. So we'll start with Route 20. On the Route 20 alignment, as it stands today, related to this specific grant started in 2011. However, the Route 20 is actually one of our original routes that dates all the way back to 1980. Pre-COVID, the 20X, as it relates to the express, related to the specific grant, ran two trips in the morning and two trips in the late afternoon. Our urban corridor grant that we receive every year is $285,000, excuse me, $285,915. Our annual cost to run the route is a little bit less than that. As you can see, it's about $270,000. You can see the hours that we run it on an annual basis multiplied by our operational costs, our fully allocated costs, about $106 an hour. Now, what... How this works with DOT, we are only allowed to bill DOT for operator costs as a percentage of the total system. So the average monthly reimbursement that DOT can give us as it relates to this specific route is about $7,400 a year, and that's $88,000... Excuse me, $7,400 for a month. So that equates to about $88,000 a year. So we're really only covering about 33% of the operating costs out of this specific grant. But regardless, what that does for us is it leaves us with about a $200,000 balance out of this specific grant that we're unable to apply to the Route 20. So what DOT has allowed us to do is apply that balance from the 20 to the 275 LX, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. So I hope that's not too confusing, but essentially, we end up with an additional balance because of the small amount of money that we're actually allowed to bill against the grant. So one of the questions that was asked was the average daily ridership that we get is about 51 unlinked passenger trips. That was our fiscal year '19. I didn't want to use '20, obviously. It's kind of a '20 numbers to date. So, I hope that's not too confusing, but essentially, we, we end up with a, we end up with an additional balance because of the, the small amount of, of money that we're actually allowed to bill against the grant. So, one of the questions that was asked was the average daily ridership that we get is about fifty-one unlinked passenger trips. That was our twenty nine, that was our fiscal year nineteen. I didn't want to use twenty, obviously, it's kind of a twenty numbers to date, obviously, this has been kind of a strange year, but that, that's been relatively consistent for the Route Twenty the past couple of years. Next slide, please. And to help answer some, some of your questions further, there are some questions as to where the ridership occurs on the, on the route. These percentages account for ridership in both directions, so about sixty percent of the ridership occurs in the total ridership of birdings and alightings at the Lutz Target, which is just across the county line, a few hundred yards across the county line in Pasco. That's the, that's what allows it to be an urban corridor grant, in that it crosses that county line. As you can see, the majority of the ridership occurs along the Marion Transit Corridor. We get about twenty percent of it at M T C, and, and we get a little bit more of it down at, at the Whiting Street. So, M T C and Whiting are really the two primary stops for, for ridership on the twenty X. And then when it gets to MacDill Air Force Base-
You also were-
Has left the meeting.
When we get to MacDill Air Force Base, we get about ten percent of our total ridership occurring on the twenty X down at the Air Force Base. Next slide, please. So I'll, I'll provide the same, same background with the same, same kind of numbers, the same, the same, the same applies to this two seventy-five L X and, and the amount of, and how we can bill to F D O T. However, what's important here is that, to understand is that while we get the two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from DOT, we're also allowed to apply that additional two hundred thousand dollars from the twenty X. So essentially, we have about, we have about four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that we're allowed to apply from the grant to the two point six five million of the total operating costs of the two seventy-five L X. So that's about nineteen percent of the, of the, of the cost of the, of the two seventy-five L X can actually be covered by this, by the grant. So, we, we actually end up, we are able to spend the entire, the entire amount of the two hundred and eighty-five thousand for the two seventy-five and the additional two hundred thousand from the twenty X on the two seventy-five. So, all in all, between these two, we are able to spend the total amount of our urban corridor grants across both of these, across both of these routes. In F Y nineteen, we saw a total, on average, of about four hundred and fifty-five unlinked passenger trips per day. I will say, at, at the beginning of last fiscal year, we saw a significant increase in, in that ridership. The next slide will show you that trend, very distinct and sharp trend, if you can go to that slide, please. We really began to see the impacts of the growth of ridership, and that continued into, into the year until COVID, until COVID hit us. You can see, we, we have a, most of our ridership occurs at U A T C and M T C. We do have about ten percent of the ridership occurs at the Park and Ride in Wiregrass, and then only about seven percent of the ridership goes all the way through to, to the airport. And that's, so our recommendations for the fiscal year twenty-one service modifications are kind of, are, are consistent with our observations of really focusing our, focusing our services, the two seventy-five L X, where the ridership is most effective. Next slide, please. And again, this is a, this is, this was for the entire year of twenty nineteen. You can see, down there to the far left, you'll see the two seventy-five L X and the, the twenty, the twenty is on there, well, express routes are in the red in general. They do run, you know, they, they are, from a revenue, from passengers per revenue hour perspective, they are not necessarily on par with our, with our better local routes, but they do serve a much different market and a different need, and that is something that, from a service perspective, we, we try to take into consideration in being, being able to at least take advantage of these grants to, to continue these services for, for the commuter. Next slide. So with that, we have, we have two resolutions, really essentially the same, we're asking for the approval of, of our interim CEO to, to approve the continuation of these, these grant agreements for both the two seventy-five L X and the twenty X. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cochrane, I think that was a very thorough, yet concise presentation. I appreciate it. So, what we'd be looking for is to see if there's board approval for each of these separately. The first one would be to authorize acceptance of the grant for the twenty X. Is that Director Williams?
Second, sir.
Right, we had some board discussion. I have a motion to approve by Director Williams and second by Councilman Schissler, and it's Director McLean first, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, great briefing. I just want to make sure everybody's aware or clarify that twenty X is the route that supports MacDill Air Force Base also, am I correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Yeah, it actually goes on the base. Okay, I just wanted to highlight that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, good point. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, and, and I too wanted to confirm that that, that's the only route that serves MacDill at this point, given our current routes, correct?
I, I, I believe the three sixty go on there as well right now.
Okay, all right, that's what I was, I wasn't sure, I was thinking it's got to be in my other route. Can you define unlinked passenger trip for me? I'm not sure I'm clear on what that means.
Yeah, so essentially, if somebody, if somebody, if somebody gets off, let's say, somebody gets, somebody's going from on the twenty L X to, to, all the way to the Air Force Base, but let's say they jump off at Marion Transit Center to grab some breakfast, and then they get back on and continue their ride all the way to the Air Force Base, they actually get counted twice as two different, separate rides. And that's a, that's a standard for, that's a standard for, for unlinked passenger trips.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I have, I have a lot of questions about these. And my first one is, I, let me go through some of, let's go to the twenty L X, I guess that's all we're discussing right now, correct?
Yes.
So, the twenty L X goes from just over the Pasco County line, down to the Marion Transit Station and across to MacDill. It's definitely not, in fact, we have very robust routes coming, in fact, I think it's more than one robust route, coming from the Brandon Fish Hawk, I think it's actually three, to MacDill that we've traditionally had, and they're, they're well used. And we, I won't go back to the chart right now, these are two, by the way, these two routes are two of our very lowest fixed, fixed routes of our entire service system. As you can see, they're right down there on the right-hand side, the two seventy-five, and then the, where's the, the twenty X, I was looking at it before. Is that, yeah, the Lutz Express, so you can see them down here, and the only things, a lot of them, the only few that are lower is the South County, Hillsborough South County, and then all the flex systems. But for fixed routes, these are extraordinarily expensive, long, and very underutilized in terms of ridership. And we do have several other routes that go from East Hillsborough and take our ridership to MacDill that have been our traditional routes. So if we go to the twenty L X, what you said, Mr. Cochrane, I think you said fifty-one unlinked passenger trips with two buses, so two in the morning and two in the afternoon, and fifty-one unlinked trips a day, correct?
Yes.
So that would put us, there's two buses that, two buses that bring people from Pasco County to downtown and MacDill, and then two buses in the evenings that go from MacDill to downtown to back up to Pasco. And there's fifty-one passengers in all that use these four buses, so it's approximately about twelve riders per day on these buses, on each bus, if we broke it down to average, correct?
Uh, yep.
So we're using these big buses going over long distances, you know, not making the revenue that we should be, and I hear that our buses are not in good shape and that we don't have buses that can even serve our downtown routes, and yet we have this kind of ridership, and F dot is only covering thirty-three percent of the operating costs, as you heard, for these. So we're paying a lot of money to provide this very little used service and extending it over long distances with a lot of wear and tear on our very precarious bus system and our very, very underfunded transit system. And I think this is a, a, that we should not be doing this, we should not, we have such desperate needs, we should not be serving these long trips that carry barely any, I think you even said, what, seven percent of the passengers go to MacDill, isn't that what you said?
Yeah.
So seven percent of the fifty-one passengers? So maybe five, or what is it, yeah, something like? Well, no, that's fifty-one passengers in all, and half of those are going and half of them are leaving, so I'm not sure what you do with the seven percent, you know, what that is, because I guess if they're dropped off, they got to leave too. So, I mean, to me, this is just a very poor route, one that we shouldn't be so heavily subsidizing with our very underfunded funds, and one that is not wise for us to do. As well, I feel like it's pretty much a service to Pasco and not a service to us that uses these funds. It seems like it would be more that Pasco should be subsidizing this service to their riders, because we have other buses that do this without, you know, relying on this. And also, I just think this is expensive and, and shouldn't be something that we should continue when we're looking at such underfunded service and we're looking at all kinds of other service cuts. This isn't something, this is not something that's a benefit to us, this is a loss, a huge loss, a huge loss to the residents of Hillsborough County in not being able to take transit and having it spent, I think unwisely, on this service. So, as to this service, I will be voting no, and I think it's time for us to stop hugely subsidizing these low ridership, long routes that are causing a lot of wear and tear on our, our services and costing us a lot of money for so few riders.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, and Director Hudson, you're recognized.
Hey, thanks, thanks, Chris. As the new person here, some of these questions might be a little naive or repetitive, so apologies in advance. One bullet you had on, on the slide and the route details, it mentioned that you can only bill F D O T for operator costs as a percent of the, the total system, and that, you know, third, green costs are covered. This is a really general question, but do you all have sort of an overview of the exact types of reimbursement rules and how they apply sort of upstream to the state and federal grant process to get a better understanding of, you know, kind of like the leverage that, that these, the lack of leverage that the grants provide?
Sure, I, I, I can, I can look into that and, and put some, put some documentation together for you to, to help, to help you better understand. Probably be good for, for me as well, so I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Did I answer your question, is that what you were asking for?
We may be losing, Mr. Hudson.
Yeah. Yeah, you did, sorry, I think I'm having a couple of internet issues, I'm going to turn the video off, um, yeah, that's helpful, Chris.
Great.
Thank you. Director Williams, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cochrane, thank you for the presentation, I know there was a lot of dialogue and previously we've been, thanks for bringing further information to the, the grant aboard, but I wanted to ask in regards to the grant, if the grant allows us, although it may not apply to twenty L X at this point, it, the additional two hundred thousand dollars goes into our budget, and does it allow for us to reevaluate and utilize those dollars to add additional routes and to support our, our, our market area?
From, not, not that I understand, the reason why we're allowed to move it to the two seventy-five L X was because that also was a urban corridor grant. So these are, these are like, like grants, if you will, so they fall, they come from the same bucket of funding and DOT, and, and oftentimes, you know, you can't necessarily, just because you have extra money doesn't mean you can spend it elsewhere. And when we looked into this, this was what they, they were willing to allow us to do with the funding was to apply it to the two seventy-five L X because it was an urban corridor route. It was, it was receiving urban corridor funds, so it, it would not be able to go into our, you know, just into our operation funds as a general, you know, as, as general funding to be used on a local route.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up question, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Cochrane, could you, would you explain what is meant by adding the additional funds to the two point six million dollar budget we currently have? Would you give me, explain that a little bit more so I understand how we can utilize those additional dollars?
So, yes, so if we, if, um-
Chris, this, this is Cindy, if you'd like me to come in.
Yeah, this is, go for it, Cindy, thank you.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Cindy Stiglitz, interim CFO for Heart. So Director Williams, essentially, because we were underutilizing the twenty X funding, F D O T allowed us to take the balance of that grant and apply it to the two seventy-five L X, as Mr. Cochrane has said, because these are transit corridor funds. So in the budget for F Y twenty-one that you just approved, there are two line items in the budget, one for the twenty X, one for the two seventy-five, but once the twenty X, or I should say, once the two seventy-five L X funding has been exhausted, which it spends down at a much higher rate, then we can utilize the balance of the twenty L X funding to, to defray those costs. Does that help to answer your question?
It does, sir, my question, I just want to recap it back to you to make sure I have it correct, that ultimately, we are going to benefit from the additional dollars in some aspect over, for twenty L X.
We will benefit for it with respect to the two seventy-five, because the two seventy-five L X is a much more expensive route to run, and the funding for that is, is the same as the funding for the twenty L X. So when Chris was trying to give you a, a percentage of how the operating costs were, were defrayed, you could see that the twenty L X, again, doesn't, doesn't get exhausted every, every year because of the operating costs, and F D O T only allowing us to use a portion of that funding for operator, operator direct expenses. So the rest translates over to the two seventy-five, which is a much more- So, the rest translates over to the two seventy-five, which is a much more expensive route. We exhaust that, but it's still only covering, um, about twenty percent of the two seventy-five because it exhausts out way before, um, the end of the year, again, because the operating expenses with that route, um, is, is almost ten times.
Okay.
Almost ten times the twenty-X.
Oh.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Oberman, you're recognized.
Um, thank you, Chair. I, um, you know, the, the, my, my question really surrounding the Marion Transit Station to MacDill available routes because, um, it does appear as though there are alternatives to get to MacDill. It does appear that a majority of the traffic for, for the twenty, um, and I'm looking back at my copy of it, for the Route twenty, does have a bulk of its, of its traffic through Marion Transit Station and, you know, um, and so, uh, but it doesn't appear as though there's enough traffic from Lutz to Marion Transit Station to justify the level of dollars that are being spent here and, and not, and not necessarily use it in other, other areas that are important urban connectors. Um, if we had more frequency running south to South County than we have now, we would probably have a lot more ridership there, uh, but because we don't have the, either the resources or the revenues there, um, we're not able to actually beef up that route where it's an effective route. Um, this route, you know, only runs twice a day, so it, it doesn't seem as though it has a great deal of impact, but it, it, it just does seem like an awful lot of funds to, to allocate towards a route that runs twice a day. Um, the, the other issue I have is, you know, and Cindy, you may be able, you may need to assist me on this, the, the twenty-X has a thirty-three percent coverage, but the two seventy-five has a, um, nineteen percent. Is that of the total operating cost of those routes or is that a reimbursement rate that's been set by those two different routes?
When you look at the amount of, of, excuse me, um, again, Cindy Stiglitz, interim CFO, when you look at the cost to operate those, those two respective routes, um, I think Chris had on, on the one slide for the twenty, about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. When you look at the rate at which we can bill the grant for the eligible expenses, it's about thirty-three percent of the operating cost that we can bill for. The remaining funds, which would roll to the next year, if we wanted to preserve that funding for the twenty-X, we could, but again, FDOT has allowed us to take the balance of that and roll that into the two seventy-five. So, if you look at the cost for the two seventy-five, which is approximately two point six million, because that actually, that, if you look at the total number, uh, the total amount that we have for the grant funding, which is approximately five hundred thousand dollars, if you look at that relative to the operating cost, it's nineteen percent. So, it actually, we actually exhaust out the grant funding way before the end of the year on this one. That's why the operating costs are lower because the, the, the grant funding doesn't go as far.
No, I, I, I do understand that and I, I appreciate it. I, I'm not, I'm not likely to suggest that we should cut any routes going into next year when routes and transit is gonna be so critically important, but I do think that some route design needs to be considered. And as we have had multiple conversations and multiple presentations by Tibarta that runs along this route and clearly the ridership is not there, um, you know, keeping this in place in order to address the concerns of that long distance commute is, is a much lower cost than what we would anticipate coming as the needed funding that would be necessary to, to, uh, fund the, the Tibarta project. So, I'll stop there, but I do think that, that we do need to look at this for next year to cons, to consider if there's another way to serve the, you know, the ten people that ride a day, you know, um, or not even that, the five people that ride a day from Lutz, um, if there's a way to do that, so, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Scherz, you're recognized.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, for Chris Cochran, what is the criteria that staff uses to decide whether they're going to cut a route or not?
Um, you know, in general, we do, while we do look at performance, um, we also look at the market that it's serving, um, so it's a, it's not, it's not always just, um, it's not always, um, it's not always just performance, um, you know, we, we look at where we can get our biggest bang for the buck. Um, one of the, one of the big decisions that went into considering, um, potential reductions for the upcoming year is, uh, you know, looking at how can we make, um, how can we get the biggest bang for our buck in making service reductions without impacting, um, service and, and that one of those is frequency. Um, so you can, you can make a change in frequency by only reducing, going from fifteen to twenty-minute frequency and make a significant impact on a route, um, that uses a lot of buses, um, cause that's really where you're saving the money. So, um, you know, you, you wanna look at, you wanna look at where you can, um, take buses off the road while having the most minimal impact on, uh, service to the public. So, um, it's really, it's, it's a multitude of things, um, and it's no secret that the twenty-LX is, is not performing well in, in these express routes, but, um, you know, they, they serve a, um, they, they serve a, 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 a market that's, that's different than, you know, the, the Route one and, and the six and the twelve, um, and, you know, when we looked a couple of years ago at, at even potentially, um, reducing service and getting rid of, uh, the three sixty LX, we had a tremendous amount of, um, feedback from people working at MacDill, um, and, um, they were very, um, you know, they're very, um, um, persistent in, um, ensuring that their voices were heard and, and, you know, that goes a long way as well. So, um, you know, I, we, we do our best to, to look at, to look at a number of variables to ensure that...
Okay, thank you for your answer. Now, follow up to that if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
That, um, uh, the transit urban corridor funds, is that an FDOT designation or is that ours?
Uh, that's, uh, F, uh, FDOT, sir.
Okay, so there was a, there, there is an incentive being offered to us to have, to provide this, um, as an opportunity to fulfill a key need, even if it's one that is underdeveloped but that we can be working on developing. Is that a fair statement?
Correct, and, and that's the intention of this is, is to, is to give, is to give funds to really try to get routes up and going, uh, and help make them sustainable. More significantly with service development funds than urban corridor funds, but, but yes, in general, that's true.
Okay, and, and this is probably very, uh, strange coming from me, but sometimes we can cut off our noses, our face if we just, you know, it's, it's, granted, it's not exactly the highest, we know that, uh, producing or, or utilized route, but by the same token, um, I think that their heart is looking for, looking, with the, with the, you're looking for marketing people and I would assume that the, the, the marketing intention is to further develop the, the, um, public utilization of our routes and I think that this one in particular could well be, they think it's important, um, I, they're, they're helping us with it. I, I hate to cut routes just because, you know, just because, um, I recognize that there's this financial implication to it, but it, they think it's important and there's areas up there that are probably underserved and if we can, if it's a proper market and I think we could, we could, um, uh, expand the usage of it, hopefully, that's, because if we can figure out how to do it in one spot, we can do it around, around the entire town and around the whole area. Um, I, I seconded the motion, but, uh, I, I, I fully, I fully understand the, the financial implications and I, and, and I get it that it's, that it's not the most utilized amount, but I think a very small number of people were coming strictly from the Lutz area or the, or the Pasco County area and it was picking up more ridership, this is the fact. Final question, what was staff's recommendation for this and why?
Um, at the current, um, at the current time, um, uh, I believe we still had this, um, we had this going, um, and it is, um, it's, it's something we're still collecting feedback on and, um, I, I, I don't think we're prepared to, to put out a recommendation on it yet at this point and that's, that's something that we'll be bringing to committees next month if, if, uh, if it's okay with you to hold off a couple of weeks and, and bringing that discussion.
Well, if, if staff doesn't have a recommendation, that makes me a little concerned as to, we're, we're operating it back here.
Well, I, I'm sorry, are you talking about resolutions specifically?
Yes.
Oh, I, I apologize, I, I'm sorry. Um, I thought, I thought you were speaking to the, to the future of the route. Um, so, so yes, where our recommendation is to, to execute these grants, um, so that if we do, so that if the recommend, if, if recommendation comes out of the proposal next month and your, um, and your vote in November on the service modifications includes the twenty-LX, uh, uh, excuse me, the twenty-X and two seventy-five LX, we have this funding in place. Um, if we, um, if the, if the, if the, um, service modifications do not include them, we've already spoken to the DOT and we will be able to, um, um, just not have that, that funding, um, and it will go, essentially go back to DOT. So, we just, we have it in place so that, um, it's able to be used, um, um, you know, we, we're, we're, we're trying to be conservative about this and ensure that we, that we have these in place, uh, the assumption that we're moving forward with them, um, but if, if the final outcome is that they're not, then, then they will not be in service and these funds will not be used.
So, these resolutions would just authorize the, the, uh, uh, the spirit to, 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 I, I'm a little confused, and what are we going to do with this if we're potentially changing it in thirty minutes?
So, I mean...
I hate to sound naive, but I'm a little confused with it.
Well, we, Cindy, is that you?
Yes, please. Um, I just wanted to clarify again, for the record, Cindy Stiglitz, interim CFO for Heart. Um, I, I wanted to clarify that if we execute these grant agreements, um, in advance of making any changes to the service and that we can potentially, we can potentially start using the funding immediately to defray the cost of the service up until the time at which it, it's modified. So, even, even if we don't change any service until, say, January or February, we can utilize the funding, you know, as best we can until that time. So, any, any unexpended grant funding could then be deobligated and, and again, given back to FDOT. It's not really, it's not an advanced grant, so it's not like we would be writing them a check, we would just deobligate the fund, uh, and close the grant.
So, if I understand you correctly, then if we, if we do not approve these, then we will not be able to utilize the, the urban grant funds, also the transit urban corridor funds, and we would have to split the whole bill within our, within our current operating budget?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, so, so your, your recommendation is to approve it so that we have external sources of funding to, 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 to cover this. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're, we're, uh, getting into a second round here and I think the issue has been clarified about, um, it's been really good discussion about whether or not to continue these routes or cut them and, but that will come very soon in our, uh, service modification, um, discussions that come, come forward. So, um, I'll go through the last few of these, um, raised hands, but let's try to wrap it up. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yeah, I was, um, I, I remember that whole issue. So, this could, right now, only pay for the interim service that is occurring right now if we were to shut this route down in a few months, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the others are, um, I just think it's important for, uh, those of you, I mean, you mentioned three sixty LX out of Brandon, that has a lot of riders, this does not. There is another service that these, that can be used for this and it's called Van Pull and it takes five to fifteen people. That's fewer than is already being, you know, used by this bus service and certainly makes a lot more sense and, uh, that is really what, uh, is appropriate. We've been doing this for, what did you say, how many years has this service been in place? Um, and, and, you know, it's not getting any more ridership and it's getting incredibly expensive and yes, we are doing it and by not, by hugely subsidizing this low ridership that Hillsborough County residents are paying in their ad-alarm taxes, we are not providing service within Hillsborough County to like South County, for instance, or anywhere else because we're spending this huge amount of money. It's not a gift, um, that, uh, this subsidy by, um, FDOT, it is costing us hugely in every way and not a wise decision that we would not be making. It's, it's, uh, you know, I don't know, um, it's, it's a, you know, we'll give you this discount and then charging you ten bucks as much to do it. It's not a wise service. So, in the future, I will be opposing us, um, continuing with this service. It's, it's, um, unwise for the interim to pay for what we're already doing. I'll, I'll vote yes for this, but I will be very opposed to continuing, um, this, uh, service once that, that comes to, uh, discussion.
Director Mechanic, you're recognized.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I have to agree with, uh, Commissioner Temp here. The, I mean, we are in a financially constrained situation and while it, it is nice to get a grant from the DOT, we are furthering the DOT agenda in terms of their desire for regional connections, but we have other priorities here. And I've said this before, whenever we vote on one item, I, I, I always want to know what, what is going to be sacrificed in the process. We don't have an unlimited amount of money and I, I, I have just simply not heard a compelling argument for these routes. I just, I mean, if the staff is holding something back that they haven't told us that makes this much more critical than I'm seeing, I'd be glad to hear it, but right now, I'm not hearing a critical need and the, the percentage grant is small enough to where it doesn't appear to be, to be a, a, a big incentive for us. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, Director Williams, you're recognized. Or is your hand still up from before? Director Williams? All righty, um, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, excuse me, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I thought I was off mute, but I give my time, Commissioner Scherz, but as I wanted to mention that I did talk with staff about reviewing the, the, um, the route at a later time as well as, uh, just getting us through this moment, so, um, for the bus route and not to cut them at this point. So, thank you, I appreciate your, your call.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Director Williams, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Uh, does this money have to have a, a deadline?
Uh, does this money have to have a, a deadline for it to be compromised with the FDOT? Is there a deadline on this?
Um, Ms. Stiglitz, you want to address that?
Um, no, sir. It does not have a deadline.
Could this go before a committee at all?
Uh, yes, it did go, uh, I believe it was the last operation in safety, safety committee and it was deferred to the full board.
The committee didn't make a decision on it?
They did not.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, um, is there any further discussion?
Madam Chairman, I, I'd like to-
Director Mechanic.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to just speak to Commissioner Miller's last question.
Sure.
The, the reason the committee didn't vote to recommend it is because we were not receiving information that we needed to decide whether or not these were worthwhile routes. That was the whole point. And again, I, I don't want to repeat myself, but I haven't heard anything today that would make me think that these are worthwhile routes given our serious financial constraints that we're under right now. So that's, that's really, I just wanted to say that because the committee was feeling the same level of frustration that I am right now listening to all this.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Miller, you're rec-
Through you to, to Mr., to Mr. Mechanic. Mr. Mechanic, you said you were not getting information from whom? The staff?
I, I don't mean they're withholding information. I'm just saying they haven't given us an explanation that convinces me that the project, these projects should go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Schisler, you're recognized. Uh, Chris, on the motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It, it is on the motion, but I, I just, unless I'm missing the, the point, we're not trying to decide the merits of the route at this point. That's coming up at a later meeting, but that, as, as Chris said, it's coming back to the committee next month. This is just to help get money in, you know, from external sources to help us in driving in the interim until we reach that decision. Um, again, it's not the merits of the route. It's, 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 it's alternate funding that will help us with that route until such time as we decide to either continue it or stop. If I'm wrong, please, somebody please clarify that.
Thank you. I think that's the meat of the issue that the, the discussion is getting at and I understand it the same way you do, Councilman Schisler, that, um, even if we were to vote no on this funding, um, tonight, would that, um, would that, uh, would, would that pull this route? Would that eliminate this route, um, sometime sooner than our, um, operations, um, our upcoming, um, discussions about route changes? I mean, it, the board is clearly not in, not inclined to want to continue, um, I don't think, uh, funding. I'm not hearing a consensus on moving forward with this for any length of time, but if Mr. Cochrane could, could clarify that, um, even if we, um, were to pull the funding tonight, we would still have to be running those, or, or not apply for this grant tonight, we would still have to be, be running those buses until we're done, um, making decisions about the route changes that will be soon coming to us?
Uh, yes, Chair, uh, yes, Ms. Chairman, and, and I, I would say, uh, Director Schisler really, he did a very good job in, in summarizing. That's exactly, um, what we're talking about right now. Um, if, um, if we decide not to move forward with this essentially until the next markup period where we can, um, take this, uh, route out of service, we would need to pay for it.
All right. Um, I think we've got a really good handle on what the, uh, motion is before us. Uh, Commissioner Overman for some brief, uh, wrap-up.
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Chair. And I, I think there, there may be some confusion when, when, um, Ms. Cochrane mentioned about the routes and the fact that these two routes are now fundingly interdependent. We need the money for the 275 LX and if we don't have the extra left over from the 20X, we can't fund that more expensive route. So that's one issue. And then two, I, you know, I, I was looking through the documents. I was looking at the, at the comments that the Stiglitz made. You know, if we don't authorize this today and we authorize it after making our route modification motions next month, you know, it, when does this money start? Did we need it yesterday? Are we going to get it tomorrow? Is it going to run the routes until we make the changes? Is, I think, what's not clear and what's discussed. Because if that's the case, deferring this authorization until after we make the changes might be a better course of action. I'm not suggesting an amended motion at this point, but I, I'm not, I need to hear that if we're able to defer this until the, uh, route modifications occur, is it, is it only that we would then fully fund these routes until that modification is done or, you know, and the money start right away? Or is it that, you know, they, they start when we apply and we actually have the funding, uh, um, to run the routes? Ms. Stiglitz, could you help with that, please?
Um, yes, I can. So currently, um, and, and again, these are grants that renew on an annual basis. And so at the moment, we have completely exhausted all funding for the 20, for the 20X. Um, the, the funding that we have in place today, um, is, is what we are currently using for the 275 LX. I don't have the exact amount in front of me, but I, I believe we have enough to get through the end of September and through the end of October in the current grant before we would need to utilize one or both of these grants. We do not have any funding left for the 20, the 20X. As you saw, it's, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a nominal amount that we've been billing, but that's been based a, again, on, uh, how service was, was, uh, being conducted over the last, um, few months. So if we don't, if we, if you all decide today, um, to sign the resolutions, we would submit this to FDOT immediately and they would then have to execute the grant agreement, which upon their execution, that's when it would be effective. So conceivably that could be two weeks. We would have that grant agreement, say mid-October, and then that would carry us through until we made modifications to either the 20X or the 275 or both.
Uh, oh, okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Um, Director Hudson, did you have your hand up leftover from before? Or did you have a final question or comment?
That is a leftover. Apologies.
All right. And Commissioner Miller as well?
Leftover.
Leftover hand. Let's take a vote on the motion in front of us to approve Resolution 2020-0939 to, uh, it's in your packet, to authorize the interim chief executive officer to execute a public transportation grant agreement. Everybody mute your phones. The agreement is between Hillsborough Transit Authority and the Florida DOT to accept transit urban corridor funds to assist with the operating cost of Route 20L, 20X, um, in the amount of $285,915. Motion made by Director Williams, seconded by Councilman Schisler. Ms. Arthur, please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. This is Danielle from HART. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Harden? Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Knight? Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
No.
And Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viera? Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes nine to one. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, the next one, uh, we should be able to get through since it's very similar and, um, I, I think the discussion's about the same. Um, this would be whether or not there's a board desire to approve, um, the similar resolution for the 275 LX.
Of approval. Second.
Um, uh, motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by, um, Councilman Schisler to approve Item 5B resolution. Is there any discussion on this one for the 275 LX? I have, yes, I have a hand up from, uh, Commissioner Kemp. You're recognized.
Again, in terms of temporarily paying for what we're doing already, um, you know, I'm all right with that, but again, this is a service that suffers from the same kinds of issues that the 20 LX. If we were just trying to do good ridership and, um, good effective, um, transportation within Hillsborough County, this is not a route we would be doing. As I understand, forty-seven percent of, even though it goes from Wesley Chapel to the airport, forty, or fifty-three percent, I think, of the ridership is actually between Wesley Chapel and USF and I'm imagining back and forth. Again, it's more a service at the point of origin at Wesley Chapel, uh, to come to the university than anything else. And I really think, again, it's a Pasco County service and why we're, um, why we are heavily subsidizing, even though the money is coming over from the 20 LX, we're again having a route that we are hugely subsidizing. Only nineteen percent of it paid by this, using our bus service for this long ineffective low ridership route, um, that could be served better in, in other ways and is served by, for instance, the one that goes from, um, USF to right down to downtown. Um, and, and you can get, uh, a bus ride from downtown to the airport if, if that's what you want. Um, but that's, that's not happening and even pre-COVID times wasn't happening in any robust way. So, um, I am, again, just, um, you know, when we, when the discussion comes, I just want to highlight these because this is, again, ad-alarm taxes, huge investment by Hillsborough County residents in this when we so desperately need and are the most underfunded transit system in the nation, not just by a little bit, but by a long shot. And to think that we're not doing services to South County, to Progress Village, to Town and Country, to all these other places because we're subsidizing an omnibus service is just, um, doesn't really, um, make sense at all to me. So while I'll vote for this brief continuation, I will, um, I will be opposing it in the future.
Thank you. And, uh, see no further discussion. I'll just, um, say that I, I, I think we've, what we've been through tonight is, um, very fruitful discussion and, and I appreciate staff providing us with, uh, accurate information here and answering these questions, um, so thoroughly so that we can really get a handle on it. I have to say that, um, moving forward, I would like to go on record as agreeing with, uh, Director Mechanic and, um, Commissioner Kemp and the others who have raised a lot of concerns about the efficiency and effectiveness of spending our precious transit dollars on both of these routes. So, um, I think we've come to a lot of consensus tonight on, uh, that we will need to take a fresh look at these when we're considering the upcoming route changes and, um, whether they can, there are pieces of them that can be served by, um, smaller vehicles or, uh, whether we, um, uh, you know, divert these dollars that HART is spending to other more effective routes. Um, uh, I, I think we're all coming to a, a good consensus and understanding of what is, what's going on here. So, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Um, here's the motion to approve Resolution 2020-0940 to authorize the interim CEO to execute a public transportation grant agreement between HART and the FDOT to accept transit urban corridor funds to assist with the operating costs of Route 275 LX, um, in the amount of $285,915. Motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Councilman Schisler. Uh, Ms. Arthur, take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Hudson? Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director Mechanic?
No.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viera? Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes nine to one. Thank you.
Thank you. Good work, board and staff. Um, and now that takes us to item number six, the, um, interim chief executive officer's report. Good evening, Ms. Stewart. You're recognized.
Good evening, HART board members. Uh, the interim CEO report is in your packet on page, what should be listed as page thirty-nine. It's after the resolutions in your packet, even though it starts with number one. It should be, um, there and the presentation is listed in the packet at page forty-three. Uh, this report focuses on our areas of focus, the HART success plan, customer experience, community value, employee success, and financial performance. We continue to operate in the COVID, uh, nineteen environment since March. We have, um, delivered three point one million essential trips and our ridership continues to be down by fifty-eight percent. You can change the slide, Danielle, if you. Uh, regarding, um, COVID within the agency, um, you see the chart. Uh, we have had now, uh, fifty-two employees confirmed positive. We have fifty of those employees have, have returned to work. Uh, you see three for August and that should be two for August and one for September. You should have received a report, um, employee advisory number fifty on, uh, Friday. As stated, our ridership, next slide, please. Our ridership continues to decline, remaining a declined state with fifty-nine percent for fixed route, sixty-two percent for para and seventy-four percent for streetcar. You can change the slide so that you're up with me, Danielle, please. We did see a spike for a couple of days on our streetcar. Next slide, please. On our streetcar ridership due to the games at the Amalie Arena. As an agency, we have, um, disinfected since March twentieth, nine thousand six hundred and ninety-four hours. Regarding our facilities themselves, nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight hours. We now have a workforce of seven hundred and ninety-six employees. Uh, we will continue our virtual town hall meetings and the next meeting, um, is scheduled on September thirtieth. Uh, this will be regarding the modification of services that you just spoke about and that will be held at the Marion Transit Station and Marion Street. We will practice social distancing and mask and sanitizing on October seventh, twenty twenty. However, we will have it as a virtual meeting also regarding our proposed service modifications. Next slide, please. This is an update on our autonomous vehicle that is now operational. We thank Lorena Hardrick for hosting some of the community leaders on September, uh, third and fourth. Uh, we continue to work with TPD and their frontline, our police officers regarding this autonomous vehicle and we've had two roll call briefings with District, uh, Three on September twenty-second and on September twenty-nine. Uh, in the photo, that's Dan Rodriguez from HART. Uh, this is the, next slide, please. And this is a, an example of the flyer that we made for TPD that they can also log on. TPD that they can also log on for training as a first responder. One of the critical things in the training is which window to break or how to disable the battery in case of an emergency, and we thank TPD for the partnership we have with them on this. Next slide, please. Just go ahead, Danielle, those are just the more slides. An update on streetcar, number four twenty-nine. On February the third, the vehicle was damaged when a tour bus collided with the bus. The tour bus was at fault. Their insurance company has assumed liability and has been cooperating with HART. The vehicle is at Gramaco in Iowa, who's a manufacturer, and they've informed us that based upon their assessment, there is damage to the frame. It's not localized, and so to repair the whole vehicle is impossible, and so they've recommended replacement, and so we're working on replacing the vehicle through our various insurance carriers for this. This vehicle has not interrupted the service because we still are operating our six cars plus the breather. Next slide, please. Congresswoman Kathy Castor, on September the seventeenth, held a conference call that was virtual on Facebook regarding the U.S. Senate passage of the HEROES Act. It is passed at HART, and she focused local frontline workers. HART's own local fifteen ninety-three president, Ms. Letitia Jones, participated in this Facebook and basically updated Castor and others on things the agency has been doing, how we've spent our careers' dollars. We have received sixteen point five million to date. Also, an update on the operational matters at HART, how we responded to COVID, how we kept all of our employees working, the allocations of PPE to our staff, and also the impetus of this call was really to have support voiced for the Senate to pass the HEROES Act, and part of that passage was to hopefully include funds directly for transit, which was not necessarily named specifically in the act, and we thank Ms. Jones for representing HART in this matter along with other people. You see the USF employees from their local union, as well as the Hillsborough County Teachers Union was also part of that conversation. Next slide, please. On September the twenty-first, I participated in a telephone conference call with the Secretary of Florida's Department of Transportation, Kevin Thevot, along with Mr. Guan from District Seven and Mingao to discuss matters related to HART's response to the COVID pandemic and going forward. Next slide. Just to let you know, we are, it's not a slide, we, this is an information item, regarding the contract dispute with Safety Vision, we're still waiting for a report from the hearing officer, and that should be forthcoming. Next slide, of employee success, we've made flu shots available to our seven hundred and ninety-six active employees on the fourteenth of September, and other dates are planned for the flu shots. You may have seen the paratransit incident on the news that occurred on September the sixteenth, where our operator was physically charged with being diverted from her route by an unscheduled passenger who boarded the vehicle. We're pleased to say that she was physically unharmed, and the person was arrested, and we thank the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department for their longstanding partnership and their prompt response to the emergency alert that came through the HART communication system. Regarding financial performance, we just wanted to update you on the memorandum that was issued by the President on August the eighth and the memorandum that was received on August the twenty-eighth from the Department of Justice issuing guidance on implementing this memorandum, which basically states that people who make less than $40,000 bi-weekly could have their taxes deferred from September twenty-first through December thirty-first. The HART financial team, in consultation with ADP and others, and reviewing all the documentation, made a decision that we would not participate in this because of the withholding payments are merely deferred, and we would have to pay them back anyway, and that would impact the first quarter of the calendar year 2021. And that information went to employees who had concerns, and now we're going across the agency, but we just gave this as an information item to the board. The next item that we're pleased to say is that HART received a compliance evaluation inspection, and we are in compliance with the EPC regarding inspection of our facilities regarding the wastewater permit that we have, and they specifically focused on our bus wash operations there. We'd like to thank the board again for your approval of the $200,000 request for our paratransit vans. An item I'd like to call to your attention is the sole source, a contract with Infra Strategies. It was listed in my report last month. However, we did not verbally advise you of it. It's in your packet, and this is for Infra Strategies and Mr. Jeff Booth to give us assistance regarding the expertise needed for the agreement we have with the City of Tampa and HART for our expansion of the streetcar. I reported last month that the FTA acknowledged receipt of our Small Stars grant, and we're just waiting for a response from that. In this COVID-19 pandemic, nationally and some locally regarding the overt racial tensions, the perceived disparate treatment within this agency, and the economic uncertainty related to the pending sales tax decision, create the perfect storm for our organization to revisit our mission, vision, our metrics for success, and critically assess service delivery and viability. So we thank this board for approving the 2021 success plan, as well as for the contracts grants from FDOT that will help us with service delivery, and we look forward to, in the words of Ms. Kemp, the robust discussions that we will have regarding the proposed service changes in the coming months and in January. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. And, you know, thank you especially for all the work that you have done with staff to keep our staff, our employees, safe as possible through this COVID pandemic, and it's just remarkable that we've been able to reduce the cases way down again, and with all the measures that you're taking, but also that the staff is complying with all the guidelines and the HART recommendations. So I very much appreciate that, and supplying the flu shots to all seven hundred and ninety-six employees who want one, it will be very important during this pandemic time. Thank you very much. All right, seeing no further board discussion on that, we'll move to my report, and if you'll just be a little bit patient with me, I was advised by council it would be a good idea to have a little bit of board action and discussion on these items. The first one is the structure of HART board meetings, meaning that the governor's order that allows us to hold electronic meetings without a physical quorum expires soon, October first. So we will be having to discuss and work on how we're going to meet after that and whether to hold hybrid meetings to allow both electronic and in-person participation, and staff will be working on the mechanics of that. But we will need a physical quorum of fifty percent plus one, that is in the charter. It is very hard to change. What's not so hard is our policy. HART policy 210.06 apparently allows electronic participation for only two meetings per calendar year, except in the event of exigent or emergency circumstances. Now, I think it's obvious that a pandemic qualifies as emergency conditions, but I've been advised by general counsel that we should have a motion to show that the board agrees with that, to affirm that under policy 210.06, the pandemic qualifies as exigent or emergency circumstances, so that a failure to attend a public meeting in person during the pandemic doesn't count towards the two meetings per year that we are allowed to miss otherwise.
I'm moved.
Thank you. That was a motion by Commissioner Overman, and second by Director Mechanic?
That's a question.
That's right.
Okay. And Commissioner Overman, you're...
Yes, thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. I do have concerns, even if we are able to figure out how to deal with an in-present quorum versus a hybrid meeting to allow some folks to attend virtually. Our boardroom will not be socially distanced. I mean, we're all right sitting right on top of each other. Even if we were to take it down to a quorum number, it's still going to be very difficult for the board to attend in that particular boardroom to meet the required in-person quorum. For those of you that may or may not be watching the special meetings, the Board of County Commission has asked the governor for her consideration to extend that in-person quorum, but to date, to my knowledge, we have not gotten a response from the governor, and that expires on the thirtieth, so on October first. So our next meeting, or committee meetings, two weeks from now, you know, would need to actually have an in-person quorum unless we're able to find another location. The boardroom is too small to accommodate a board meeting at this point, in my opinion. So while I am very eager to put that motion in place that we make the virtual attendance not subject to a problem under these circumstances, I still have some great concerns about how we would get together safely so that our leadership does not risk COVID, basically.
Thank you. And so if there's no further discussion on the motion, let's go ahead and dispose of that, and then circle back and ask if staff, if they have any comments to answer Commissioner Overman's concerns about where we might be and how we might accommodate social distancing in our upcoming meetings. But first, if Ms. Arthur will take the role on the motion on the floor.
Good evening. Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director McLean?
No.
Director Mechanic?
Yes.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Overman?
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Viera? Director Williams?
Yes.
The motion passes nine to one. Thank you.
And is there any information from either you, Ms. Stewart, or Ms. Pettit, or Ms. Stewart, possibly, to talk about options that you're considering, anything we can help you with in deciding how to set up the upcoming meetings, including, as Commissioner Overman pointed out, a committee meeting coming up in two weeks? Ms. Pettit, do you want to address that, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, board members, Chair Smith. This is Lena Pettit with HART. So here at the HART Administrative Office in Ebor, we have, as you remember, a DAS, and that we can accommodate safely nine board members around it, or seven board members as interim CEO and general counsel, total of nine members. We also consider other options of alternative location, but staff is still in discussion with general counsel. This is a very preliminary discussion, so we will be considering other options as well. It presents less challenge for committee meetings because quorum, as you know, is fewer members, only three or four, but for the board meeting, yes, we are still working through those challenges.
Great. So you think the next upcoming committee meeting could be handled in the HART boardroom?
Yes, because quorum for committee is three or four members, and we can safely welcome them in this boardroom at safe distance.
Okay. And we'll just have to take this one step at a time, I think, and let staff advise us where the meeting will be after that. Also, are there any other board discussions?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, if we are going to meet in the boardroom, this is Carolyn Stewart, with the trainings that we've had here on the Twenty-first Street facility, we have utilized internal filters, a filtration system that's been approved by CDC, and so we have these filters in there to filter the air so we don't have the same air circulating in the room at the same time. So if we do have a committee meeting at Ebor, we will use that internal air circulation filtration system there in that room also.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't want to be anything more, but I have to. I'm so sensitive to everybody's concern with COVID, but since we will need to have some type of physical quorum, I am willing to commit to being at the meetings that I'm part of, so that we can start to head towards accommodating our quorum requirements. Just as a note of interest, the city public terrorists went back to full meetings in June, and we...
Has left the meeting.
Our DAS is much smaller than what we have to work with within HART, and we social distance, and we wear our masks, and we've had no issues. So, I mean, I will commit to being one of the ones who will be there to count towards our quorum requirements.
And staff will be, as they set up the meetings, they'll be checking with each of us who will be able to attend in person and who will need to attend virtually, and make sure we have a quorum, or we actually have people driving into Tampa.
Yes, ma'am.
But thank you, Councilman Schisler. I'm being advised that Director Viera, Councilman Viera, has been having technical difficulties, so that's why he's trying to get out and possibly phone back in. So, okay, after that motion, I was also advising, and Ms. Mandell, correct me if I'm wrong here, the last I spoke with you and Mr. Smith, you were advising that after we agreed even to defining the exigent circumstances as making sure that we had the understanding that that included a pandemic, we should still take this opportunity to set things up to consider revising our policy on attendance to reflect this, and as you all know, revising our policies is a process that takes three meetings, starting with a simple direction to our general counsel and staff to work on potential revisions and bring them back to a second meeting that we could then read and discuss and decide on, at which point we would set a public hearing, which would be the third meeting. So in order to make sure we've got the process started, the first step would be to draft some revisions to direct our general counsel, to draft some revisions for us to consider if needed at a second meeting regarding requirements for telephonic participation, and making sure that we have everything in those policies that we might need moving forward, and maybe not only to accommodate the pandemic... And maybe not only to accommodate the pandemic, but other emergency situations from hurricanes, state of emergencies, to, you know, chemical spills, or the other kinds of emergencies we face. So that was the other thing, I would just wonder if there was board direction here to go in that direction. Ms. Mandel, can you speak to that before I throw it up for board discussion?
Certainly, Chair Smith. Here, as we've been discussing, your policy only allows for board members to attend telephonic meetings, is obviously written before the Zoom phenomenon, telephonic, telephonically for key meetings unless there is a determination of exigent circumstances which this situation meets. That being said, it would be, in our opinion, a good idea to go ahead and revise that policy to whatever other emergency circumstances, or even if you wanted to just leave it open-ended, that any member can request that they can attend a meeting telephonically, it's for you to decide how you want that policy to go. I do think a lot of jurisdictions really are moving in that direction, given this situation, and given the fact that at this point, it's becoming more acceptable to have these types of meetings, and really the only thing you do face because of the determinations by the Florida Attorney General is having that obligation to have a physical quorum in place. Otherwise, having folks, staff folks, other folks, be telephonically available is perfectly acceptable. So we would seek a motion from you to go ahead and ask for us to bring you back a revised policy that you can discuss and consider, and that way you close that loop on that circle. Thank you.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman?
Second.
Second by Director Hudson.
Got a question.
I have one too.
Right. Commissioner Overman, since it's your motion, go ahead and then Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you Chair, and thank you, Ms. Mandel, for the clarification on what the process is. Having three meetings is going to take us into January, so is it possible, since any of our committee meetings are actually publicly noticed, that we could dovetail on those meetings as a way of having at least the initial public hearing, or the first step of those three meetings?
I would have to go back and check what your policies and what your procedures require in terms of this process. It is a pretty significant and onerous process that you have, so we can see what we can do to make that go sooner. Just for clarification, we are comfortable, especially through the end of the year, that just simply making the motion that you previously made, saying that we're in the process of exigent circumstances, is sufficient, so even if we have to have a more elongated process, I'm comfortable that we can continue to utilize this process, as is Mr. Smith, who we discussed this with, but we'll see if there's a way to shorten that process, to get that moving forward.
Well, thank you. That answers, that addresses my concern. Thank you.
Ms. Pettit, did you have a comment here?
Yes, Chair Smith, Board members, I can actually respond to that question. We can establish the adoption of the board policy schedule to take the first reading during our October 19th committee meeting, and the final reading and adoption at the November 2nd board meeting. So it's a little bit shorter than Commissioner Overman just noted.
We could also, could we also add it to, or otherwise add it to our October 14 special meeting?
Unfortunately, no, because, so we have a provision for special board meetings. It's only that topic that's listed for discussion that can be addressed during that meeting.
Great, okay, thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes, and maybe I missed something here, but, and I know we don't really have much public or staff in there at our committee meetings, but I'm just wondering about, if we do have it, even if it accommodates social distancing in the boardroom, will we have, like, limits on that, or how will that work just in the, if we were to all of a sudden have public participation in a bigger way, or, I'm just wondering about that also, in terms of our general meeting, how we deal with other than the board?
Elevator.
Again, I answer that from a legal perspective. The legal obligation for you to operate in a manner consistent with the sunshine law is one, physical quorum in place, and two, an opportunity for the public to provide comments prior to you taking action. Many jurisdictions, and I know Hillsborough County, one of them has been working through the use of this hybrid system, where not all your staff go serve, are there, they're going virtually, where not all of the public are there, they're given opportunities for virtual, and an opportunity for them to actually, in a limited way, attend the meeting. So there are a lot of options there. I have been speaking with Danielle and Nina about all of those options, in order for us to make sure that we're complying with the sunshine law requirements, while at the same time keeping folks safe. And so, as you all know, especially those of you that are on board, this is not a unique to HART issue, this is all jurisdictions in the state of Florida are undergoing this exact same conversation.
All right, thank you. Does that do it for you, Commissioner?
So, I understand, I think I understood what you said, but, so you're saying for the public, that I guess maybe as long as we provide them with both virtual and physical, or how, again, can you just, I mean...
What I've been advising jurisdictions that I've worked with, is that they have the opportunity for public participation virtually, whether it's a call, whether that's Zoom, but that they also provide a physical location where that could occur on, in the same location. That doesn't necessarily mean they're obligated to be in the room. You can do it a variety of ways, where you can allow people to be out of the room and come in just for a comment, or if you can accommodate it just outside. It's my opinion that that meets your obligation as long as you make accommodations for that public comment. So in terms of those being your two legal requirements, physical quorum in place and the public comment, those are what is really required. And having, in my opinion, having some physical location where the public can come to when you're having your physical quorum in place, even if it's not in the same room, but accommodates another way, that's acceptable. Whether or not pure virtual is acceptable, I don't know that that's obviously determined by any court or jurisdiction, so I think it's good to have that vote. I do think you'll probably see as many people want to attend virtually as attend physically, no matter what, so I think it's appropriate and important to have those as opportunities, if you can accommodate it.
I think, I just would say, I think it will be a bit of a challenge, the physical accommodation at the HART building, and I know the county zoning hearings we've been having at Saunders Library, which is quite, you know, large, I'm just wondering about someplace like that for the public to, or, you know, I just, I don't know, but I'm just throwing that out there, because I think, yeah, just the constrained, the elevator and the small spaces and anything else, if we were to ever have strong public participation, which I think usually we know it's a very small accommodation there for the public, and it's not a lot of public comment, but, you know, a lot of interested parties that could watch on television, or watch a stream as well, and maybe won't be attending for that reason, but I'm just concerned, and that's more to staff, about how we deal with that.
Thank you. And at the county zoning hearings, they actually leave public, some public come out in their cars, and go out and get each one, one by one, and bring them in, inhaling it that way, but they're not dealing with an elevator situation that we have. So food for thought, and staff will be working on that. We're seeing no further discussion on the motion to direct the county attorney, the General Counsel to bring us back some revisions to our policies. Danielle, please call the roll.
Please say yes or no after your name is called. Director Castor?
Yes.
Director Hudson?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director McLean?
Yes.
Director McCannick?
Yes.
Director Miller? Director Overman?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Schisler?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Director Vieira?
Yes.
Director Williams?
Yes.
Will I focus, yes, my mic was all muted.
Thank you sir. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm just going to give a brief update on the executive recruitment, to wrap up my report, and share with you that the recruitment is progressing as scheduled, right on schedule. Applications closed on Monday, the 14th, and 170 applications were received with a good amount of high caliber candidates, so I'm feeling very optimistic on that front. Currently, the consultant Gov HR, they are reviewing the resumes, interviewing the candidates, conducting background reviews, due diligence, et cetera, and they will be narrowing the field at some point, but we will get a report from them scheduled for October 9, a recruitment report to the Board, and it's my understanding they're going to send us by email individually, a password and link to go see the recruitment report on their protected servers in confidence until we get to later stages. But that will, I'm told, include all the candidates in a spreadsheet with some concise notes about where they meet, or the filters that, and which are filtering to the top of that list. And so we will have that by October 9th to prepare us for our October 14 special meeting. That'll be Wednesday at 3:00 PM, October 14, conducted virtually, and during that meeting, the Board will receive more report, Gov HR will be there, and we can discuss the process with them and discuss next steps. And I'm sure it'll be a very robust discussion to talk about the process by which we will move forward and filter down the applicants, and how we will conduct interviews in person and virtually, and all of that. So I look forward to that on October 14th. And if there's no questions, I think, you know, we'll really have meaty discussion about that on October 14th. If there's no questions about that, the General Counsel's report is next.
Yes, unless you all have any questions with me, I don't have anything else to report. Thank you.
Great. And so that takes us to the presentation, is, hopefully, the Board is, you know, this presentation's been put off a couple of times already, but we are scheduled to see Mr. Bill Ball, AIPP Chief Operating Officer of Tindell Oliver, give us a presentation on Envision 2030 Regional Transit Development Plan, and I'm sure you can understand, Mr. Ball, that we will be most alert for this if you are able to keep it as brief as possible for us.
I understand. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I understand there's a major event coming up in a little bit, so I'm there with you. Again, it's Bill Ball with Tindell Oliver, pleased to be here representing T-BARDA tonight. Executive Director David Green is also on the line tonight, if you have any questions for him. Next slide, please. What is Envision 2030? Well, first of all, it is a legislative requirement in the T-BARDA legislation, but the bottom line is putting together that regional transit vision and a blueprint for making progress toward that vision for the five county region. Next slide. We have worked closely with the key regional partners in developing the plan, especially the five local transit operators, the MPOs, and of course, the Florida DOT. Next slide. So why are we doing this? Well, there's a number of values and benefits shared on this slide. I'm going to emphasize a couple of them in the next two slides, but most important is just providing more regional transit mobility options in the future. Next slide. One of those is regional job access. There was an independent evaluation by the University of Minnesota that looked at implementing Envision 2030 and the impact it would have on regional job access, and there would be a substantial increase in the number of jobs that would be available to the average resident, and it's especially effective for the low to moderate income areas and increasing their job access in the region. Next slide. Also, regional competitiveness, and how Tampa Bay compares with other regions around the country. The Tampa Bay Partnership does this annual assessment. You can see our rankings here, especially in the red, where you can see we don't fare so well in terms of transit measures, bike and ped safety, as well as transportation and housing affordability. A more robust regional transit investment, all transit investments for that matter, will help make this region more competitive with other regions around the country. Next slide. We are proud of the public and stakeholder engagement we had leading up to the adoption of the plan. Well more than 10,000 people participated through the various techniques on this slide. Next slide. T-BARDA has two top priorities, and something we want to especially emphasize tonight. Number one is to increase the total amount of transit funding that comes to the Tampa Bay region, in support of local or regional transit services. And number two is to build a consensus region-wide as to how T-BARDA can best support making progress toward the regional vision that I'm sharing with you tonight. Next slide, please. We also spent a lot of time learning from other peer regions around the country. They have generally been more successful in securing federal transit funding, so we wanted to learn from them, to take their best practices, and see what, which ones are most applicable to apply here in the Tampa Bay area. Next slide. We went through a significant process of developing the regional transit vision, and it relied greatly on the work previously done by the local transit agencies, by the MPOs and their long-range transportation plans, as well as the public input along the way, which is where we are today with the regional transit vision. Next slide. And this is that vision, and you can see it's a range of regional transit services and technologies throughout the five county region, including many of the projects that HART has recently expressed support for, including the arterial BRT on Florida and Fowler, the streetcar extension, the passenger ferry services, and the CSX corridor as well. So it does reinforce the priorities of HART as well. Next slide. Now, we have that regional transit vision, we stepped back and we looked at some 10-year investment scenarios to start talking about how we could make progress toward that vision. The first scenario is a status quo, which is continuing T-BARDA's current roles with commuter services, regional transit planning. And then the second one is related to helping identify additional funding, new funding for improving existing regional express bus services. And then the third one is the higher-impact scenario, where there's more robust regional transit investment in the first phase of regional rapid transit, as well as some new express bus routes that connect the region as well. Next slide. And this is a visual of what scenario three would look like if we were able to fund it, recognizing that currently this scenario is unfunded today. Next slide. Quickly on the operating costs and revenues over the next 10-year period, this gives you a sense of what those are for each scenario. The T-BARDA currently has about $42 million in existing revenue sources over that 10-year period, so you can see how that compares to the operating costs for each scenario, with status quo being funded, and the low and high-impact scenarios having unfunded portions of the plan. Next slide. Similarly, for capital costs over the same 10-year period, it's essentially balanced for the status for the status quo and low impact, and then when you have that major transit capital investment and the high impact is where we have a significant unfunded portion of that scenario. Next slide. This gives you a picture of TBARDA's existing funding over the next ten years. You can see the bulk of that funding comes from state and federal sources. The gold area shows the local contributions from the five counties, and that equates to a little over five million over the ten-year period. And the next slide shows you how that breaks down on an annual basis. Currently, the counties contribute five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per year, and it's distributed among the counties based on population, and you can see that Hillsborough is at about two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand. Next slide. So, of course, funding is the key element for the future of TBARDA, and, and the, the primary, you know, vision is to find, identify and pursue dedicated funding from the state in two areas, funding for the agency itself, and then funding for the implementation of regional transit projects. And certainly, the charge of TBARDA is to work collaborative, collaboratively with local partners on what are the best strategies to increase the total transit funding to the region, to allow the investments to occur at both the local level and the regional level. Next slide. We did put together some calls to action and some, and some recommendations for the TBARDA board to consider as they pursue the next steps. We organized them into these three categories. I'll be very brief about each, so let's start with the next slide. From a policy perspective, the board adopted the plan back in June, so the next step is to continue educating our partners on everything that's in the plan and getting collaboration as to what the next steps will be. So, the board is working on how we will best collaborate with the local partners going forward. Next slide. Of course, the number-one priority is the funding call to action, and especially number three, which is exploring the opportunities to leverage new state and federal transit funding for this five-county region. Next slide. Commitment and collaboration is key. Certainly, we're looking for supporters and champions from our local partners, as well as the TBARDA board, and in the long run, we really want to inspire business and grassroots leadership as well, and support for TBARDA, and really coming together with, with the local partners as to what are the best roles that TBARDA can play to really help both the local and regional transit investments in the future. Next slide. This just reiterates the benefits and values that I started with, again, with the ultimate focus being on increased regional transit mobility throughout the five counties. Next slide. The TBARDA board did adopt the plan, Envision 2030, on June twenty-second. It had three key components to that adoption. Number one was, they did adopt the regional transit vision network with the understanding that it's unfunded at this point in time. Number two, they adopted the status quo scenario, since that's the one that can be funded with existing revenue sources today. And then number three is they supported continued discussion and evaluation of the various elements of, with the local partners as to what the best next steps are moving forward. Next slide. Next steps, we have been presenting to the county commissions and the MPOs and the CCC. We have one commission presentation left, and that's Thursday to the Pinellas Board of County Commissioners. Bottom line is stay tuned for future opportunities for TBARDA board to collaborate with the local partners. Next slide. There's a lot more information out there on the TBARDA website, both the final report and an executive summary, that I would encourage you to look at as well, but we're happy to answer any questions here tonight. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. The third time's a charm.
Thank you, Mr. Ball, and thank you for speeding through that, um, for us. Are there any, uh, questions from board members I'm, I'm seeing? No, uh, Mr. McLean, Director McLean, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and no real questions. I just wanted to let you know and the board knows, as your representative to TBARDA, I did sit down with Bill Ball and, and his team as this started. Um, I believe, as you look at this, and if, if the board would take a deeper look at it, I think they'd see a little bit more detail in it than what Bill was able to present to us tonight. I, I do believe it makes a lot of sense. I, I do believe as we go forward in this region, regional transit is gonna be a key, uh, and then, of course, defining those roles of TBARDA and how they can best support the local transit agencies, I think it's really good, too. Um, there's still some work to be done, I, I believe, you know, as, as they collaborate with the regional, excuse me, the, the local partners and all, and I believe we all see that, and of course, there's all those conversations around funding. But, um, but in the end, I think, I think it would behoove all of us to just take a good look at it. Twenty thirty is not that far around the corner, to be honest with you, um, and, and we have a great need for transit, not only in the local area, but in the regional area there. So, I think it's a good presentation. Uh, I think Bill and his staff, a team, along with David Green, have done a good job, uh, and so I, I just, like I said, I just ask the board members to take a look at that in, in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, I'll be fast, 'cause I've already spoken to this twenty different meetings. But, uh, anyway, I am also on the TBARDA board and have adamantly been the no vote on these projects, which, um, I could go through a list of reasons for a long time, but, uh, basically, what, um, has been put forward and well-funded by the state to do a study to provide a regional parking garage plan and lanes in the interstate, um, with, um, originally, it was like eighty-nine-hundred cars that they could park along the interstate, which, of which I don't see any, I would never support anywhere in Hillsborough County, zero, um, where, where they wanted the main funding for the parking garages for us to build. By the way, they're called multi-motor centers, but they're parking garages, and they've finally acknowledged that. Um, and then, uh, and also to build lanes on the interstate, and this is not cheap. This is four-hundred to six-hundred million dollars, of which they, and that's not even including any operating for what they call BRT, but seems very much directed to be, um, that we would be paying, um, the bulk of it in Hillsborough County, um, for what seems to be clearly an automated vehicle venture, um, for privatizing, um, they've suggested privatizing our services at Hart and causing our, our transit tax dollars to be, um, given to them to either rehire us and give them a cut of it, or else to privatize our, our service. So, I find the plan, um, in so many levels to be inequitable and disturbing, and, um, and to date, the dollars, um, for operations for TBARDA have twice, um, come at the, at the expense of the Hart budget, um, two different years in a row, taking a million dollars that would have been allocated for our desperately needed operations center, which is practically going to dust, um, and it certainly should be the, uh, operational, um, should be the priority for the whole region. There's nothing else, I think, that could be, um, more important to providing transit and opportunities. And, and finally, I'll, I'll just say this in terms of, um, uh, you know, all the, this focus on commuters and, uh, according to their own study, or this study that was put forward, and I'd just like to let people understand this, is ninety-two percent of the time, somebody turns a key in a car to go to work in Hillsborough County, they end up in Hillsborough County, and we are desperately underfunded. We talked about the regional routes, um, even those, um, you know, and how inefficient they've been and how they take from our resources, and I would highlight that again, but I think if there's anything, um, to, if we could ever have some resources, I think taking care first of Hillsborough County, uh, but to do this, I think it should be that the dollars should come down from the state to Hart and, uh, and PSTA to do the bus service totally paid for with state dollars, not with any local resources, to provide the intertownie transit, and we shouldn't have to be subsidizing it with our dollars. That would be a system that, I think, would be, um, reasonable to, uh, put forward, but that's, um, not the plan. So, anyway, I'll just, um, you know, yeah, I, I will not talk about the other points I could make, but, uh, I'm, again, I've, um, totally been a no vote as this has moved forward, and I don't see any, uh, future for it, um, here in Hillsborough County, and I'm, I'm, um, pleased that Hart is looking at things like the ferry and like the CSX, um, and other options, and BRT on Florida Avenue, uh, and, uh, all the other options that we have that I think are, uh, will serve many more riders, commuters, and, um, and really help people with opportunities and, and ways to get to work and home and other, and really transform our communities.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Sorry, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Ball, for the presentation, and, um, I have seen it several times, but, but I, you know, every time I see it, I do see opportunities for, uh, addressing issues that I think this board is, is concerned about. Um, you know, the funding is clearly an issue, and if we're able to, uh, put together a successful plan that mirrors, and I'm looking at fourteen different screens that I have over here, so, sorry, um, mirrors maybe the Minneapolis-St. Paul or the Seattle plan that has, is fully funded, um, outside of the local regional, you know, transit contribution process, you know, one, that would be very effective, because this would be a regional plan. And, and while, you know, TBARDA has looked at doing, uh, using our roadways as a way of facilitating regional transit, which we recognize all of our roads currently are in, um, in challenging situations, whether that be now or in twenty thirty, um, of over, you know, oversubscribed, because we've been so car-centric for the last thirty years or more, um, you know, utilizing a transfer process to, uh, execute or prioritize the CSX lines would help Hart not only address the concentration of rail lines that are in Hillsborough County, but also facilitate the regional needs that we have without having to sit in traffic. One of the nice things about trains is, one, the accident ratio comparatively to vehicles is significantly lower. The congestion impact of traffic is also significantly lower, and while it takes a long time to get transit, uh, you know, rail projects going, given it's a, it's not a small start project, it's a much larger, having Tallahassee's, uh, the state and federal support and truly looking at a real regional project that can facilitate the frequency that's necessary to allow a transit system to function well would be my, in my opinion, the best way to go about creating regional access. And, you know, the, what we have seen from, uh, you know, the partnership and other regional studies on economic competitiveness, those communities that have rail have been more competitive than any other of them. So, ignoring that that will be down the line versus what we should be looking at for twenty thirty, I think is a really critical, important point. Um, and that would also create TOD that we could see where there's room to do so, um, and actually help facilitate the urban growth that we need in those urban areas, but also facilitate, um, you know, transit-oriented development in the areas that are more remote. For example, part of the reason why the Wiregrass 275 LX does well is there's massive housing built around Wiregrass. When you drive up there, there's apartment complexes galore, and so there's a lot of less expensive than downtown, you know, Tampa area, uh, apartments there for people to live in, and yet we still don't have the ridership, because we don't have the corporate partnerships and the corporate outreach that basically says, here's a great way of saving yourself money and saving, the employer saving money by helping really be a partner in encouraging transit ridership, um, even if it means buying an annual pass for each of their employees. Guess what? People use it, even though it might not be that much more. But I, I think it's critically important for us to think out of the box and look at those opportunities where we've gotten true federal and state support, and so we're not playing this, you know, take my last dollar that I have out of my pocket and use it for something else, um, as Hart has had to think about. Um, but more importantly, you'll end up with a system, I believe, long-term, that could efficiently get people from long, long distances to the employer centers that are largely located on a more percentage basis in Hillsborough County. So, I, I thank you for the work that you're doing, but I do think it's time for us to really, really look at where our assets that are already in the ground are and how we can maximize the use of that for facilitating transit investment dollars long-term, so, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. And, um, seeing no more board discussion, Mr. Ball, I'll just thank you for coming. Um, I also have seen this presentation. I know you've given it a lot of places. I see it changing, uh, from time to time. Um, uh, the first time I saw it was at the Metropolitan Planning Organization's Policy Committee, and I had much stronger concerns about what was being presented there, um, than, than here. I think you're hearing, uh, community feedback all along. Um, I still have the, uh, we'll just put on the record here, the, the concerns that I share with the, uh, similar to what PSTA raised about, um, you know, the inefficiencies inherent in funding, um, these transit projects by using a pass-through, uh, layer of government as opposed to, as Commissioner Kemp suggested, um, giving the money directly to the agencies, uh, given that, you know, TBARDA is not, um, does, it does not have the capability of, uh, running their own, they're not a transit agency, they don't have their own, um, capability of running the transit, uh, system, so they would be subcontracting them out, possibly even back to Hart and PSTA, so, um, so there's that. Um, but that's all I'll put on the record tonight for that, and, um, they're understanding, we all understand, we have more, more work to do, and thank you very much for coming. Did you have any closing remarks, Mr. Ball?
No, I think you've seen it evolve as we've continued to work with the local partners, so I'm sure it will continue to evolve in the future.
Thank you. All right. Um, that closes up the presentation. Thank you very much, and, um, there's old business, new business. Is, does, uh, anybody have anything before we close?
Go Bolts!
Go Bolts. Yes, we've already lost some of our most staunchest Bolts fans, and thank you all for sticking it out here.
Wait, 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 wait.
That's Commissioner Overman.
I'm sorry, I just have one item. Um, uh, we do have board members whose terms are coming up soon, but I also, and I believe Ms. Pettit received a letter indicating that our appointee to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, of which I'm the chair, um, has resigned from the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. Uh, so, Adam Harden has served as our board member from Hart on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and he is asked to, um, resign from that position on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. And so, um, it, we are going to need a replacement, um, as soon as possible. The Affordable Housing Advisory Board is robustly moving as quickly as possible, and so I just ask that as quickly as we're able to get that on the agenda for a vote by, uh, by the board to find, to replace that appointment, I'd appreciate it, so.
I'm not sure if that's, uh, is that a board vote?
Yes, Chair Smith, this is a board vote, yes, and it's scheduled for November second's board meeting.
Great. November second, okay, great.
What it's worth, I'm interested in serving in that role, so, whatever, I know we can't talk since Sunday, so, uh, whatever I need to do or whoever I need to talk to, Danielle, I guess, let me know.
Good to know, thank you.
Will do, sir, thank you.
All right. Um, seeing no further business to come before the board, uh, go Bolts.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
This is Carolyn Stewart. I'd just like to clarify, when I spoke about what was being utilized as, um, filtration with, and, and, um, circulation and air quality within training rooms, we're using the HILPA filters as well as disinfecting, and the UVA purifiers have been ordered, and they're on back order, and they won't be available until, we're expecting them November the, October the second, and that is what we anticipate utilizing in the board room, uh, if we have any committee meetings there, and I just wanted to go on the record with that.
Great, great, that's, um, that's good to know. Going once, adjourn this meeting, um...
Thank you, everybody, go Bolts!
We're good, we're adjourned, and we'll see you October fourteenth. Thank you so much for sticking it out, everyone.
Wiregrass!
Go Bolts!
Go Bolts! Bolts, go Bolts!